Okay, thank you very, very much. And we'll officially call this regular monthly meeting to order and say welcome to all of you. And if for some reason you cannot hear or understand, if you'll raise your hand, I will do my best to get the speaking person to make adjustments in their voice or in the equipment they're using, and we'll proceed. Also, those of you that might not be familiar, the table in that corner of the back of the room has some paperwork that will help you enjoy the meeting tonight and can follow along a little better. So help yourself to that. And now that we've got some extra seating in place, if you'll help guide people to the seating for those over in the back, it might look like the room's full, but direct them forward and... Okay, we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance. All right, let's stand, please, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance to this lovely flag in the corner. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're gonna consider the approval of the agenda.
Mayor, I would like to switch topics 14 and 15, just switch the order. I think it flows better discussing the pavilion and then that would lead into Block Q. So just change the order of those two.
Any more changes that need to be considered?
Item 11, discussable and possible approval of the special meeting dates, that's on this agenda and the agenda for Thursday's meeting. Are they supposed to both be on the...
I didn't bring Thursday's meeting. I think that was only financial. Heather, can you verify that?
Yes, that was on the special call meeting agenda, and I honestly just left it on there because I didn't know if you guys would finish talking about it. So, but my direction was to bring it back to you guys at this board meeting, so it's on this meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make just one clarification on item 12. We're talking about awarding the contract for the walkway. It's not for the hatteras ramp.
So you're saying strike the word hatteras ramp, words hatteras ramp?
Yes, sir. That's all.
And, okay, hatteras ramp and, those three words will come off. Okay? Any more proposed changes? Is there a motion to approve the amended opposed agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second?
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. The amended agenda is approved. We're now on number five on the approved agenda. Conflict of interest check. Madam Clark, what, did we decide we're gonna do that? Am I reading that or am I just asking people?
I was gonna ask you. I could read the summary that's in the rules of procedure and ask everybody if that'll work for you for today.
All right, that'd be great.
Okay. In the new rules of procedure, it says immediately after the approval of the agenda, the presiding officer shall pull each member to disclose any potential conflicts of interest. In the event that a potential conflict is disclosed, the members will vote on a motion to allow or excuse that member with respect to the agenda item. If excused, the member may not participate in any discussion, debate, or vote with respect to the agenda. So if the board would like me to do it individually? Okay, I'll just start at the end if that works. Commissioner Parkin?
No conflicts, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
No conflicts.
Thank you. Commissioner, Mayor Porton Myers?
No conflicts.
Mayor Holden?
No conflict.
Commissioner Smith?
No conflict. I just have a question. Where is our town attorney?
We'll get to that in just a second.
Okay.
I don't have an answer for that one, sorry. And Commissioner Dyer?
No conflicts.
Thank you.
Okay, since the question was raised by Mr. Smith, I don't have the ability to be involved with the agenda anymore. I went through my box at my office and I found an envelope, and it is from the town attorney, and if I'm out of order, somebody tell me because it's not on the agenda. But I do have a letter from the town attorney since the question's been asked, where is the town attorney? I have a letter of resignation here from the town attorney. I don't know whether you want me to read it or do you want me to just announce that he's resigned his position as town attorney effective immediately. I don't...
I say read it.
Dear Mayor Holden, please consider this letter as confirmation that I am hereby resigning my position as attorney for the Board of Commissioners for the town of Holden Beach. This resignation is predicated... He's got predicted. This resignation is P-R-E-D-I-C-T-E-D. Predicated on the fact that some of the newly elected board members appear to be intent on ignoring the binding ADA mediation agreement entered into and between the town and Martha Myers and the United States Department of Justice. I participated in that mediation along with Commissioner Smith and Murdock. Sincerely, Richard Green. So we don't have an attorney. That's the reason he's not here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Where are we not wanting to abide by the agreement? I don't understand.
I just read the letter, sir. I don't, that's my job. I don't know anything else.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, back to continue the business. We're on number five, consideration of the minutes, is that correct?
Number six.
Regular meeting of December the 19th, special meeting of January the 5th. What's your pleasure? I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
Both sets.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. The minutes stand approved unanimously. We're on number seven, public comments on agenda items. Has everyone signed up that was intended to sign up? I'll have Will Carter. Subject is the pier. If you'll come forth to the podium, speak into the microphone, sir, and identify yourselves.
My name is Will Carter. I live at 108 Starfish Drive. I was born in 1959, the same year the pier was open. We were, when I was five, I walked to the end of the pier. Next few years, I fished, played with friends, and ate cheeseburgers at the grill. In my teenage years, we played games, talked to girls, and made new friends. I still have memories surfing near the pier, watching Holden Beach legends like Jeff Lee surf through the pipes, surf through the pilings, and tell stories. I'm 65 this year, so the pier, no matter how many millions of dollars you spend on me or the pier, it's not gonna make us last another 15 years. Commercial structures have a usable life, and after that is gone, they are removed and renewed, such as schools, office buildings, hospitals, bridges, town halls, chapels, and yes, the pier eventually. The pier eventually receive a do not resuscitate notice, and that is the case for the pier. Getting old. Any structure on this island that was built before 1960 is either gone for a ride on the Milligan Railway or in the back of a dump truck. The ones remaining would probably not pass the current code. Please stop, please stop the debate on how much lipstick it takes to cover this pig or what color string to use so we can make a silk purse. I ask the commissioners tonight to make a motion to create a new pier for Holden Beach. Also, I would like, I would like to ask the commissioners to create a pier committee, which can get started right away with way on plans, permits, designs, and financing with input from the residents, property owners, and elected officials on the island. As the saying goes, time is money, and I believe we've wasted enough of both. So let's get moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Kimbrough?
Hi, my name is Steve Kimbrough. I live at 141 Tarpon Drive. I haven't been here quite as long, but I agree with the previous comments. There's two agenda items on item 13. The second one is to put together a committee or have a public input session, and the first item is to go out for bid, and I think it would be a mistake to go out for a bid, to do anything to the pier until we get adequate public input, maybe put a committee together, maybe the committee decides, as the gentleman said, that we tear it down and we build a brand-new one. But whatever the long-term business plan is, I believe that should be decided before any bids go out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Regina Morton? Martin.
Good evening. I'm Regina Martin. I live at 1032 O B W. I'm here to talk about items 13A and E. On item A, I do support us going out, finishing what we started, and at least getting an idea of what it would cost if we were to come in and jet in those pilings. I believe that is something we can move forward with quickly, and I do believe that we should ask the consulting firm to do that, and I believe we should ask them to maybe cut their rate for whatever it is they charge us, because they should have did it in the beginning. They should have bid it both ways. So that is my suggestion, that we maybe move forward with that, at least get a price. And then if some of the other ideas that are coming up are viable, look at those as well. As far as having a meeting or a group or whatever to evaluate where we're going, we've had meeting after meeting. It's been going on two and three years. I don't know where everybody has been during this time, but it has been going on. So therefore, I believe that we had a public session when we applied for the grant. I don't know how many people here were there, but if we had another one, then I don't see that that would be hurtful, but I don't think that's a reason to stop what we're doing. And I would love to see the pier open this season, because I believe it's detrimental to our economy not to have that pier operation. And Will's plan, I read it. I think it's great parts of it. Of course, being old-school, parts of it I don't like, but I'll throw you out a little one from me. I fixed the old pier. I put me some cement out front. We got another, what, 500 feet out there? That's approved. Come for you some concrete there, once you've got the money. That concrete will protect the rest of our pier, and we'll still have our heritage, which is what this island is built on.
Thank you. Sylvia Pate?
Sylvia Pate, 111 Charlotte Street. I did send in some written comments, and I won't belabor those, but I did wanted to talk about a couple of those, a little bit more specifically. I, as Regina, do encourage you to support having the staff to engage back with the value engineering to reduce the scope of the work for the pier and rebid the project. I think given the input that architects shared at the previous meeting as to the method of installing the pilings, while that would also maintain safety, I think it would be appropriate to at least rebid it and see what that would cost us, regardless of what direction that we might decide to go in the future. I also support the idea of, if you feel like that there is a need for a public input session since the plans are being revisited, but I also do suggest that you appoint a pier committee that needs to be established for this project with the idea eventually that it moves to the park and recreation board. As far as items 4 and 15, I think it's a good idea to refer Block Q to the Parks and Rec Board, but I really am concerned about the detail that was outlined in the cover sheet for the agenda item. I don't want to, don't understand why there was no mention of parking, in particular the vehicle, boat, and trailer parking, because that was talked about from the beginning in initiation of this project, that we wanted to have some boat and trailer parking over there, so there's no reference to that. This project's been out there for a long time, too, and it's been scaled down, it's scaled down, and there's been numerous iterations of that, but always there's been the concept that there would be some boat-trailer parking in there. And if you're not gonna put any boat-trailer parking over there, that's ultimately what your goal is, I think maybe you had, need to have a meeting with the wildlife commission and maybe the Brunswick County Commissioners, and see if we can't have some kind of partnership and build one on the other side of the island. As for the pavilion, I know you're talking about moving it possibly over to the Block Q. I don't know. I know you're gonna ask some questions about that. If it doesn't need to be completely replaced, I would suggest we leave it where it's at. There's already a dense floor there. Why would we want to spend money to build a new one? Overall, you know, you guys want to save money, but it seems like we're spending money by redoing projects and spending money for architects and engineers for things that we've already paid for one time. I would like to recommend that if you are gonna go back and change these projects, the pier and Block Q, that's what you really need to do is to do an economic impact study. I think that needs to be completed. It would be an outside person to do that, an unbiased person, consultant, for both of these projects. I mean, it's hard for us to take our emotions and our passions out of projects. It's really hard to take that out. But when it really comes down to it, we really do need to look at it from an economic impact perspective for the town, and ultimately, what we end up doing is about preserving our history and heritage here at Holden Beach. So I think that's important. I know there's a professor at University of Wilmington that does these types of projects. I don't know what the cost is, but I think you should probably consider that. Thanks for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, ma'am. Jim Bauer?
Jim Bauer, 329 Ocean Boulevard West. What a miraculous, wonderful thing it is to see, to see the term "public input session." Isn't that great? I think that's a great thing, and I think that's where we should be talking about all these things. Block Q, the pier, all these things. But one of the things that I find that it's amazing to me that it's not on it is what about the lift station, which is the only thing that if it goes bad, is really gonna affect the quality of life here. I think everybody's been talking about economic responsibility. I completely agree with that, but we have to take care of what's going to affect the most amount of people if something fails. Block Q's a pile of dirt. That can sit there in perpetuity, and we can figure out what to do with it some other time. The pier, anyone that's been to more than two meetings knows exactly where I'm going with this. It's a pile of sticks. It's worthless. But we have to get, we have to get, a quarter of this island is in danger of not having sanitary facilities during the next flood. That has to be the priority. Everything else has to wait. Thank you very much.
David Bennett?
Good evening, and I thank y'all for your service. David Bennett, 110 Starfish. Happened to be neighbors with Will Carter, so we usually get a word in edgewise, so I got the microphone. But we live, my wife and I live in Lexington, South Carolina, and I read Will's letter, and we drove down here. Our first, I'd never heard of Holden Beach. My dad got moved from Chiraw, South Carolina, to Wagram, North Carolina, and all the people that worked with J.P. Stevens had places down here. We were kind of poor, so we didn't have a home. We had a trailer, and people still, my wife doesn't believe me, there were trailers on the oceanfront. You remember Mesa's Mobile Home Park? So we came down here in the 80s. We thought we had found a jewel. And so, early 90s, I was coaching football and golf at Catawba College. Alan Holden, Alan, I was sitting here looking at you, and I was saying, I know you're a little older, you don't look as old as you probably are. But I'm gonna tell you what was really cool was Alan helped sponsor with Cheerwine a college golf tournament at Lockwood Foss. And so, it's amazing now, all those golfers from 24 universities and colleges across North Carolina, and I stay in touch with a lot of them, they still come and have homes and vacation at Holden Beach, North Carolina. And so this is a special place. And so I remember when the pier went all the way out. I remember now where it is, and I remember the best cheeseburgers. My mom, y'all probably remember Ma Bennett, she would always want to go there and bring cheeseburgers and hot dogs back to the house, and we said, where in the world he's come from? Right there at the pier. So we've got a phenomenal beach. We've got a, you look at the prices of homes on this island compared to others, it's a special place. It really is. You got a home here, you're blessed. And so, as we go on through life, my dad's still alive at 90, Marcy's parents, they're in their 80s, so you talk about, we've got two sets of great-grandparents. Between her siblings and mine, we've got seven children. We've got 14 grandchildren, and just had a great-grandchild. And so there are a lot more great-grandsons that are coming. That's our first grandchild. So we want Holden Beach to be complete. We don't want other beaches to be building these nice piers. So I would recommend we get a pier committee and get it going, whether it's building a brand-new $20 million pier, doing something to what we have, expanding, whatever, but we need the pier. We don't need the pier shut down. That's a huge part of going to the beach, and this is a special place. Thank y'all for what you do. Alan, thank you for sponsoring the kids over 30 years ago. I'm not gonna tell them how old you are.
Coach, I still have my T-shirt from that tournament. John Pierce?
John Pierce, 123 Burlington. And I knew what I was gonna say until the last gentleman came up here, and all I can think about is cheeseburgers at the moment, and I used to eat some of those myself. Today I'm speaking, great comments that everyone has heard today. I've heard a wide range of ideas, from pier committees to new pier, a hybrid refurbished pier, economic impact statements, a stick of wood. I mean, I've heard it, it's all over, and that's fine. That's good that we have all that various input. Tonight I'm speaking on behalf of some organization that's been announced here before, the Holden Beach Community Alliance. So I'm speaking on behalf of them. So I'm gonna read this statement, and it has to do with the pier, Block Q, and other things that you, the commissioners, are working on, and I appreciate your efforts, by the way. I'm gonna read this. "I'm speaking on behalf of the Holden Beach Community Alliance, which was formed as a North Carolina nonprofit organization about three weeks ago with filings for 501(c)(3) status. Founded by seven residential property owners that live here, some of them are here tonight, including myself, and we hope to be one of the boards, each of you best friends this year, and let me explain why. This alliance, Holden Beach Community Alliance, represents a growing number of Holden Beach property owners, residents, and nearby community members. Formed about, again, three weeks ago, we're also seeing our audience influence grow to even farther distances as those that frequent our island community are picking up on the recent happenings." So you have people from Lexington coming in, right? What's going on at Holden Beach happening? So the pier's been a big part of it, but there've been other things as well. So my message here tonight, standing here for the alliance, is quite simple. The alliance stands ready to work with this board of commissioners, the mayor, and other town officials, to help usher in many decades, many decades of cheeseburgers and whatever else makes this place special as the Holden Beach. I call it the family experience, the Holden Beach family experience. Our website explains our mission, so I'm not gonna go into that here, but in a nutshell, we are gearing up initiatives to help fund, educate, promote, and otherwise assist the town, these people, you, and the surrounding community to remain an attractive option for families all over the region and nation to visit. We want people and we need people to come here. While items on the agenda tonight, in reference earlier in this podium, are an excellent starting point, I do have one final request of the town commissioners to consider, if I may. Help us help you. Help us help you. And by that I mean, consider putting an end to the uncertainty surrounding the question of whether Holden Beach will have or not have a pier. And we just want to be able to tell people, we do have a pier in the future or we don't, because I get a lot of questions about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ryan Williams?
My name is Ryan Williams. I'm a local charter boat captain. Many of you know me all my life, but some of the new commissioners, I think you need to understand maybe a little background and perspective that I have. My family's been here since 1970. We've paid more property taxes on our house than they actually paid for it. I choose to live on the mainland, but I know what it's like to be on both sides of the fence. I've lived here on the island for close to 20 years. I've lived on the mainland. Paid taxes on the island, I've paid taxes off the island. I've paid permit fees, any way you want to. There's not a fee or a tax that I haven't paid to have access to the ocean. I've been a part of a lot of boards of the fishing community with inlet stuff. I've been a part of a lot of impact stuff, and I think it's important, you need to broaden your horizons and look at what's going on around you. You get so isolated with what's going on here, but what's going on around you. I fish series and tournaments and stuff. It's nothing to be sitting in a weigh-in line with $75 million worth of boats, as far as you can see. You wanna know how many fish out of Holden Beach? I counted up. Six. The rest are at Ocean Isle, Southport. That's the caliber of money. There's only two ways to access the ocean. That's to walk on the beach or use that boat ramp. The town collected money for trucks and trailers and bought Block Q with the intention to provide some type of parking. The fact that you want to entertain putting something else there, putting more pressure without parking there, without coming up with a solution to the boat ramp situation, you think that which side of the waterway it's on exempts you from involvement. You're responsible. You've collected the money for that cause, if not there, then somewhere else. You need to address that situation first before you figure out what's gonna happen on Block Q if you decide not to. And the fact that it's on the mainland does not exempt you from paying. Nobody argues over the sewage treatment plants. You know what goes in that pipe, and you pay for the infrastructure over there. It's the same exact scenario. It's no different than what the taxes you pay over here go to schools over there. You are responsible, and you're the biggest loser in the tax value. A place where the view of the ocean at your house is hundreds of thousands of dollars, just a glimpse at it, what is it to be able to put your boat in the water and actually use it? 11 people. That's all that can use the ocean in a boat, and that's what you're gonna have. It, I've been a part of several impact stays I've called around, and I can tell you, it's staggering. staggering what the town is losing already in the income from not having a way to access the ocean and doing something about the boat ramp, whether it be on the island or whether it be on the mainland. It's unbelievable, the amount of money that's being lost. And it turns a blind eye, that's not our problem. It is. It's your problem, and you are the biggest loser from it, not the people in the county. So all I can say is, you need to come up with a solution to that problem before you move forward with whatever else you want to do on Block Q. You're committed. It's a misappropriation of funds, black and white.
William Faircloth.
I live at 118 Lyons Ball, Holden Beach. Been here for 26 years. Raised three children here. Also have the advantage of being familiar with Holden Beach, as I'm from Fayetteville. And since the 1970s, have vacationed here. And I do appreciate the old pier, the amenities it had, and how much fun and experiences that we had as I was a child with that. I moved here in 1998, my children were very young then, but couldn't really appreciate, you know, that kind of experience that I had when I was younger with the pier we had. And certainly, living close enough to the pier, where my children could walk to the pier, we still did enjoy some of the benefits of that. But they became very limited to what we were able to do. And as we all know, that pier is very outdated, and I don't really believe that renovating that pier is an option. I really believe we need to proceed with a new state-of-the-art pier and keep up with the times and provide something that's gonna be available for the citizens here, but also citizens that live in the community of Holden Beach. I'm a physician at the hospital. I take care of a lot of people who claim Holden Beach as their home, and they don't live on the island, but they still utilize Holden Beach, and they're still proud of Holden Beach. And to have something that we could all be proud of, I think, you know, both people who live here and people who live in the community is something that we should, you know, strive for. I was at the pickleball court over the holidays with my grandchildren, who are now coming to visit me. And to look around at all the other families, I met people from New York, people from Florida, people from Virginia, that all had young children and families. And we were all there at the pickleball court, and all there at the little park they had for the children there. And that's really, that's all we had to do during that time. And in the summertime, we can use the beach, but I think in the wintertime, we're very, very limited what we can do. More people are here year-round, more people are utilizing the beach year-round. And I think that moving forward with a new pier, I think, is something that we need to certainly pursue. And obviously, we're gonna take, it's gonna take a lot of effort into looking at the finances of that and how to move forward with it, but I just want to put my support out there for that.
Thank you, Doctor. Lynn Holden.
My name is Lynn Holden, and I live at 110 Mullet Street, and I've lived here all my life. I might mention that I worked at the fishing pier for Mr. Lonnie when I was about 15 or 16. The first two years it was open, he paid me 50 cents an hour, and that was the best job I could get. But I've seen it change a lot, and I've known Gil ever since he got to the beach. And I talked to Gil when I heard that the pier was up for sale. And I was against it, and my main reason was I knew there was a lot of liability, and it's expensive thing to keep. But the beach does need the pier. There's no doubt about it. And at that time, I wanted the county to have something to do with it. And we never got, never had much interest in it. But the people on the mainland are the ones that's gonna really use it. Beach people will use it. But the town shouldn't bear all the burden. And when I heard that there might be a possibility of maybe the county or the state having something to do with it, I changed a little bit, because if you look at Holden Beach and our little area here, there's not a lot of beach property. There is lots of property over here. I have a business over there. Most, there's just a lot more people over there. And within 10, 15 miles, they all come here, because you got a river on each side. They don't go to Ocean Isle from this area here. And it puts a lot of pressure on Holden Beach. And I see both sides, the property, being a property owner on the island and understanding those people over there. People on the island don't want to finance everything for the county. These people on the beach, we pay the county. The beach little people over there pay the county. But we don't get what we should get from the county in our endeavors here. And that's my biggest concern. And if we could work at where, we need to look at that old pier. I agree, it's old. But if we have to get a new pier, somebody else has got to be paying part of the bill. The people on the Holden Beach can't furnish all the money for an extended thing. But it's just something that, I don't know why the county doesn't help us. It's just, and like one previous, because I hear a lot about the boat people, there's no place to put the boat in. I have a business over here in Lockwood. We just hear it all the time. It's not right. I think we need to do some other things, but I think we need to get the county involved in some of these extra expenses, like the town bought block property. And we need parking places. But the county ought, if we're gonna buy a property, the county ought to pay for some of that. Because it's not benefiting the beach people as much as it did over there. But that's mainly, in other words, I think we need to get some money from the county and the state to help us with that pier. We do need a pier.
Thanks, sir. Did I miss anybody's name that had signed up? All right. Thank you all for the comments that have been made tonight, and always encourage the public to give us your thoughts. We're gonna move along on the agenda, and we're on number eight, Police Report, Chief Dixon.
December was a good month, nice and quiet, not a lot of people, not a lot of calls for service. As you can see in the report there, there's really not a lot to talk about in it. What I really wanted to do was just take a second to give a quick public service announcement. I think I actually mentioned it in the last meeting, but we're starting to see more of the credit card and gift card scams going around. So just to let you know, if anyone calls you, says they're your grandchild, they're in jail, they need you to go to Food Lion or Walgreens and buy a gift card to get them out of jail, that is not how that works. If they call you to get a gift card for fixing your TV, we're seeing repairs now, they say they'll fix your TV, they just need a gift card, any of that stuff, please do not run, buy a gift card, and send them money. So that's my public service announcement for the month. And if you have questions about it, please come see me, we'll be glad to talk you through it. And if you have questions on the police report, I'll be glad to try to answer them. Yes, sir?
Yeah, this isn't a question, but I noticed on here, on the incident report, the water and sewer problems, and I've gotten some calls from people on Sand Dune Lane, I guess they've had some water issues, and we talked about it, and you were saying that if it's after hours and it's a water problem, it's okay to call 911?
Yes.
So please, just so people know what to do.
Yes, and we're seeing a lot of that with the freezing weather. Hopefully, some of that's getting away from us now. We had a lot of it the last week. But if your neighbor's water's leaking or anything like that, if it's during business hours, please call the town hall. Public Works will go out there. If it's after hours, you can call 911. I know they think the water leak is not an emergency. But we'll get an officer out there. We can usually get the water cut off pretty quick. If it's not something we can handle ourselves, then we'll call Public Works and get them out there to try to get the water cut off. But if you have any water or sewer problems, especially with this freezing weather, don't hesitate to call us. That's what we're here for.
Thank you. Any more questions out of the chief commissioners? Thank you for the wonderful job, you and your staff, too, sir. We're on number nine on the agenda. Mr. Evans, inspections report.
Good afternoon. Not much has changed. We're still running, I'll just read bottom lines on the report, active new home permits are 39. The other active permits, which are the ones that are in the folder that are open, that we work every day, are 224 of them. Of those permits, there's 30,000, over 30,045 of those. Permits that are over 100,000, there's four of those. There's been 22 permits that were issued and are waiting for pickup, and most of the rest have been picked up. Permits in review are nine. We had four permits that required CAMA to issue those, and we have seven zoning permits that have been issued. Permits that were serviced for inspection over the month was one shy of 80, which is 79. And the total inspections made was one shy of 280, at 270. So we're still running hard and heavy over there. We're really busy and doing the best we can to keep up.
Any questions from the commissioners? Hearing nine, sir. Do you have anything else, sir?
I think I have the next item on the agenda.
All right, let's go to the next item on the agenda.
Okay. The next item on the agenda was a board-initiated action. We had had some folks in the community. I'll give a little history on this, is that always in the past, accessory structures did not include in our ordinance, by definition, things like boats, docks, ramps, and piers. And in 2018, it was not in, as considered an accessory structure under the North Carolina Residential Building Code. In 2018, the Building Code Council, under eminent wisdom, exempted from permitting some, if not most of all, of what we would consider piers and floating docks at Holden Beach. If they, there was over 40 sections of code written to exempt them. The idea that they were after was to exempt the piers and stuff in standing water, like in lakes, because most of the codes, as y'all don't know, we are kind of looked over down here, so they get initiated up north. Anyway, the outcome of that was, was that we were having piers and docks built without guardrails and handrails, if they understood what it would take to be exempted. A lot of people didn't do that, they would permit them anyway and get them inspected, but some didn't. So there was a big tithe of influx between, I won't say that we were part of it, because we helped write letters to NCDOI about the hazards of not having guardrails over oyster shells, some of them six and seven feet above the mudline. So they looked at it, it took them a couple of years. And I want to say it was 2020 or 2021, they went back in and they rewrote it and made it so that all those had to be the Building Code. When they rewrote it, they added those items into the state's definition of accessory structures. And by doing that, that picked it up under definition by law. And so, we had to start enforcing those as accessory structures. Before, they were never identified in the ordinance. And now that the state identified them, we had to pick them up. So we started not allowing piers and docks and those things. We were denied the permits, because our ordinance didn't allow for accessory structures without the primary structure. Well, when, I think we had maybe one or two, and then there was some pushback, and so the board decided that they wanted to take a look at it, and the direction was for us to come up with an ordinance. Mr. Coleman's on the planning board, we carried the ordinance to them, we did the text amendment, and what we did was, that's what this is, y'all have to set a hearing for this ordinance for the next meeting, so that the public has time to see the ordinance, and at that same time, we'll bring a consistency statement back to y'all. But at this time, it's here for you to review and decide whether you want to set a public hearing for it, if that's what you want. And then, you'll have to consider the consistency statement at the next meeting, and you'll have to consider the one we bring back to you to review to look at under the land use plan, to make sure it's consistent with our ordinances. So the primary function tonight is to set an ordinance, set up, decide if this is what you want, and then schedule a public hearing.
Let's pleasure the board.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
I'll second. Time and date?
Can we do it before our meeting next, next month?
We can do it right at 5:00 at the start of the meeting. That'd work for everybody.
Perfect.
Any more questions?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those who say no, it's approved. Thank you, Mr. Evans. We're on number 11 on the agenda. Special meeting dates. Town clerk?
What I have before you, I tried to combine some of the meetings and put lesser dates. I tried to take everybody's availability into account, but I know it's hard for everybody, so that's what I came up with, and now it's up to you guys to decide where you want to
So I'll make a motion to accept the proposed meeting calendar as is.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
So I just want to point out that, like, we were asking for two meetings a week, and based on everyone's schedule, we're down to one meeting a week. But we feel that this is like the minimum that we would like to start out with, and we'll see how the meetings go. Possibly, we can get more done than we anticipate. So we'd like to start out with this, and we feel like we compromised to one a week instead of two.
Any more discussion?
Yes, sir. These meetings that you have scheduled at 1:00 and 2:00 in the afternoon, even though they're just one week, you know, this, in my opinion, this isn't a Raleigh or a Charlotte. I don't see any need in the world to have each department come in and go through them one at a time. I mean, we, most departments don't have, but just a very few people in the departments. It's, we've gone through these budgets before without this number of meetings. Also, you know, the ones of us that have other obligations, it seems difficult that we can, you know, some of the meeting, budget meetings, I don't see any need to be concerned about, but a lot of the meetings, say the one in February for the pier, why can't it be done on the 21st today after the regular meeting? In other words, instead of sending it out and having another meeting the next week? We, I don't see any need to spend the entire month on this deal. In March, again, the budget meetings on the 8th and the 13th, why can't we have them the 20th or the 21st, which is close to our regular Board of Commissioners meeting? Therefore, we could all plan, which I, most of us have planned through the year, because we had a list of meetings that we planned for each year. And if it was to March, the 20th and 21st, for the, for the Public Works and Parks and Rec, and the governing body, and admin, and inspections, police, and canal funds, again, I think those could be consolidated and put into a meeting on the 20th or 21st. In April, we've got another opportunity to move those to the day before the regular Board of Commissioners meeting, and that would be, that would take up, again, 3:00 in the afternoon. I mean, you want to be transparent, how can most of these people that are in the room today or the ones listening can be here at that time of afternoon? It's just, that doesn't seem to be, we're gonna be very transparent. So move that April meeting to the April 15th, which is again, right before the regular Board of Commissioners meeting, I think will serve its purpose. Again, in May, we have three more, budget revision, budget revisions, and a budget draft. Again, those could be consolidated in one on May the 20th, again, before the Board of Commissioners meeting. In other words, what I'm trying to get at is we're spending, I know some of us, the professionals in the, on the board, have obligations, and having this have obligations, and having this number of meetings is just pretty much, uh, puts it to the point where we're not going to be able to fulfill what we, I consider is my job to be here and to be part of these meetings. Again, the three meetings in the 3rd, 7th, and 12th of June, 7th to 17th, the day before the Board of Commissioners meeting. We can do this and work together on it. You've just got them to spread apart, that is going to be hard for the general public and hard for us that have obligations to, uh, to be at all these meetings. And I really would like to attend all the meetings. So, I'd like for you, before we vote on this final written-in-stone dates, that you maybe go back and consider moving some of these to where it would be more accommodable for the rest of us commissioners. I mean, I, 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 again, don't see the need for that meeting and some consolidation and getting them closed either before or after the Board of Commissioners meetings is, uh, is what I would like to see.
So, when I submitted, uh, you know, about my availability, there are some days that I cannot be available before five or 5:30, Tuesdays and Thursdays specifically. So, take February, for example, we have a meeting on the 7th, the 14th, and the 29th. I don't know why these three meetings can't be into one meeting. And the meeting's at two, one, two o'clock. And it was mentioned previous when we discussed this, well, we'll only be in there for an hour or two. Myself, that's a small business owner, and the people out here that are small business owners, you're talking about, you know, landscaping companies. And when the weather gets warm, they're working ten and twelve hours a day. I have an employee that has two children, and she goes to school. And me taking three days off of work every month is going to cut her hours by a day and a half, whereas I can take one day off of work and she only misses one day of work. I just, you know, and then in May, we've got one, two, three, four meetings. You know, some of these can be combined. I don't know why a hearing, a budget hearing can't be combined with a regular meeting. We have a meeting on June the 30th, which is a Sunday. I don't know why we have a meeting on a Sunday. You know, I think it gets laborious for the, the staff. I think June 30th is a Sunday, is that, am I incorrect?
That's just a prompter that if the budget has to be adopted.
That's the date, it has to be adopted.
That's the, that's the suspend date.
All right, then that's my fault. I just, I, I feel like I'm doing a disservice to the people that voted for me because I cannot make all these meetings without closing my business and I provide a service to the, the community that's, to me, is important. There's a shortage of veterinarians in the country, and I, I can't do this. I'll make, I said I would take days off to combine three meetings into one day. I've got my evenings, I'll cut my days short so I can get here in time. But I cannot make seven, eight, nine meetings a month, I'm sorry. I know we cut it back, we cut it back from two meetings a week to one meeting, or every week. So, I apologize to the people that voted for me. I cannot, I'm not going to be able to attend all these meetings.
Hold on, next, if that's okay? I'd like to speak.
Sure, you have the floor, sir.
I mean, I've said it many times, budget is a high priority to me, and I want to get it right, and I want to get in front of it. I don't want to have our backs against the wall come May, and the budget message has got to get out, or June, the budget's got to get out. So, I'm making this a priority. I'm making myself as available as I can to do all these. I do know that we picked the daytime ones to be considerate of the staff because we did not want them to have to come in after hours, and we didn't want to take up all their time. So, you know, the way it lays now is there's a larger number of smaller bites versus marathon sessions. And I think marathon sessions, you get above two hours, they're not nearly as effective as a more focused session. So, that's behind this. And I want to thank Heather for putting this together. I know what a nightmare this was to come to this point and to get this out there. So, thank you. I'm good with this, you know, if there's, things will come up and changes need to be made, but we've got to get on with this and not just spend all this time thrashing through dates.
You have taken into consideration also that our staff is very efficient. And in the last two years that I've attended budgets, we did it in two meetings, extra meetings a month. And our staff was prepared with everything that we needed to go through. And I didn't see, we had an excellent audit, and I don't see how we can't do it in the same way that it's been previously done with two, maybe one or two extra meetings a month.
And again, my request is simple, and that's consolidate these into the dates that are surrounding the Board of Commissioners meetings. Again, don't, as Doc Dyer just said, we had excellent budget sessions last year. We got it done, we had a perfectly wonderful audit. I just would appreciate, before you write, put this in stone and go for it to be the final dates, that you'll go back and reconsider consolidating a couple of these and move them a little closer to the Board of Commissioners meetings so I can, and we can, all be here and do what we're supposed to do as elected officials.
So, can I just point out that on February, we, we did take into account that you're only here on the beach one week a month. On February, we had one of the meetings on the 20th, and the BOC meeting is on the 20th. On March, we had one on the 18th, and one on the, the BOC is on the 19th, that's the day before. And then on the 16th, we have one on the 18th, which is the same week as the BOC. So, we definitely took that into account and tried to have at least one other meeting that you could be at on that week that you're here at the beach. And Paige, I think Heather also looked into the days that you were available to possibly come in for the afternoon, and I think that's reflected here on the other dates that aren't the BOC weeks. So, we did our, we really did our best, and we cut, and half of them are meetings that we really would like to have. And I don't think that we can do it due diligence without at least starting this way and seeing how it works out.
I can't make three meetings a month at two o'clock, but we could do those three meetings in one day.
We can.
Mr. Mayor?
Any more discussion?
Yes, sir. This is my first time sitting up here, but this is not my first rodeo running budgets. And I used to run a budget for about eighteen million bucks. And in order to apply sufficient rigor, it takes a lot of seat time. It was emphasized in the Essentials of Municipal Government that we all took last week that you were going to spend a lot of time on the budget because at the end of the day, the board is responsible. So, a clean audit's a good thing, but that doesn't mean the money was spent correctly. What it means is you had followed generally acceptable accounting practices and that you had sufficient internal controls to prevent mistakes and fraud. So, I think it's important, though, that our board members consider, you know, we're working as a board. It's not like we're going to do a bunch of crazy stuff while you're not there. And you guys did it faster last year, you're experienced. Honest, I'm telling you, and you can watch. So, I think the, the three of us.
So, you're basically saying it's not important that we're there?
No, I'm not. I'm saying, why don't you let us help address your concerns if you can't make it? We need to work together.
How are we going to work together when we can't attend all these meetings?
You're still going to get information on the meetings, and if you have concerns, let's talk about it. I, I think that's, you know.
I can't watch a Zoom meeting while I'm in surgery, I'm sorry.
You won't have to watch it, then.
That's okay, I'm just apologizing to my voters up front. We did it for two years, I did not miss a single meeting, a single budget meeting, we had a clean audit. I can't do this. So, I'm apologizing to my constituents for, y'all making it impossible for me to attend some of these meetings.
Because you only had three meetings, and we don't feel like we can do due diligence in three meetings.
We did a great job with them.
I, I think there's some confusion between a clean audit and budget variances.
We're not talking, well.
The budget variances were dramatic and unacceptable. They were thirty and forty percent off last year. We want to do better this year.
Any more discussion? Calling for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Three to two, Madam Clerk. Number twelve. Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. Good evening. The town accepted bids, and the bid opening was held on January 5th for the walkway down at the westernmost property that the town owns at 441. That is part of a grant that the town received in the amount of sixty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. If you look at the attached bid tab, and the bids were also included in your packet, there were four contractors that bid on the project, and the bid tab is outlined. Due specifically to the finite and more descriptive detail of when the start and stop dates are, the staff is recommending that this particular award go to A.W. Babson because there's only three hundred dollars difference in the price between the lowest bid and Babson. You are allowed to take time as a consideration when you're awarding bids. And we are working under a constraint that we do have a licensing agreement on the current west access that the town does not own for vehicle access that says that it can be pulled from the town with forty-five days' notice. So, based on that, the staff recommendation is for the award to go to A.W. Babson.
Looking for a motion?
Can I ask a question first?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the previous agreement with, with the former owner, correct?
Correct.
And so, the current owner is Mayor Holden, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, do we have, really have concerns that that is going to be an issue? That it would be pulled out from under us?
I was trying not to be involved, but obviously now, now I'm either going to be a villain or a good guy, right? And I have tried, as a predecessor, tried to be a good, working neighbor. Obviously, there are houses being built next door to this lot. In trying to be a good neighbor, I haven't started my house because the town doesn't have an access if I build a house there. And I wasn't going to say anything about that. Am I debating? I don't want to be out of order. But I have the right to stop at any time, I do. And right now, I haven't, that's all I'm going to say about it.
So, my concern is with the, so, we're only putting in the walkway, but we're not putting in the emergency access, which.
We, we are putting in an emergency access that'll go in in conjunction with the walkway. It will be the town doing that.
Oh, okay.
Public Works.
Okay, so it'll be the same timeframe?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
But, but that's not part of this contract.
That's not part of this contract, but we do discuss the project together because the total grant was for both.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, that was kind of my concern, the Hatteras ramp is emergency access.
And Public Works has already started on the beginning part of that.
Right, it's not part of this bid.
Correct.
Okay, I, I just fundamentally don't know why we don't go with the lowest bidder. I mean, it's a matter of principle that we should do that. I know three hundred dollars is three hundred dollars, but I do not see the reason not to go with the lowest bidder. And I don't know that I want to set that as a precedent that we're not going to go with the lowest bidder.
I'll, I'll speak to that. The staff felt that the finite nature of the Babson bid justified basically the convenience fee, and we had confidence that the probability of expeditious completion was greater. The board is totally privileged by statute to discard any and all bids for whatever reason that you choose to do so to include qualitative aspects beyond price.
And the only other thing I would add is if you do choose to go in that direction, we, we have a good working relationship with every contractor on this list. We did get into a situation where weather-dependent, which is how the Richardson bid is worded, was an issue with the 915 walkway this summer. So, if you're going to go with awarding the bid to the lowest bid on the sheet, I would suggest in your motion that you include some language that as the town manager negotiates that, that we get a more finite stop date.
I mean, weather would impact them both regardless of who the bidder was, right? If you can't work, you can't work.
That depends, I guess, on what your tolerances are.
Okay, I mean, my position is we should go with the lowest bidder. I mean, I, I looked at the dates, they're both the two to three-week time periods, so there doesn't seem to be a big date difference. I just, you know, like I said, it's, I guess, a matter of principle to me is lowest bidder should win.
Well, Richardson's saying he's going to begin construction two weeks after notice of the award, and it's going to take two to three weeks, so you're at five weeks.
Well, I know, but Babson says he's going to start yesterday, so that obviously didn't happen.
Yeah, and that's, they did not know that it was going to be considered at the board meeting, so they were turning it in based on starting after the bid.
Ma'am? Yes, sir. So, I understand that the town had hoped that they would be awarding this contract back on the 5th. But understandably so, they're a little gun-shy about doing that, so they brought it in front of the board. So, if the contract had been awarded on the 5th, the low bidder and the second low, the timeframes are roughly close. Further, I don't see that the access that Mr. Holden graciously allows us to have has any real bearing on this walkway. It's two lots away, I know it's convenient for a couple folks to walk out there, but we, from their street. But this is the off-season. So, I think Mr. Holden ought to be able to go ahead and build on this lot. Now, if the, the walkway we're talking about is on the west side of the pier building, and there's currently a walkway with the blue ramp on it on the east side of the building, so the difference for someone going to the beach during this off-season is essentially the width of the building. Now, I was up at the 900 block when Richardson built that, and it took a while, but we had to walk a lot further than that. So, given that, and the fact that we don't know what Babson's engagement is at this point, he may not be available, he may have to have different terms, and we just don't have that in writing. My experience with contracting is once that the vendors are deemed responsive, then it goes to lowest bidding. And I understand there may be some other considerations. But I think when we go back to responsiveness, my experience has been that that's if the bids are identical, and in this case, they aren't. So, I, I don't, I don't feel the justification is sufficient to go with the second lowest bidder.
Any more comments?
I think we should take the staff's suggestion. They are used to working in these situations, they understand the timeframe, they will understand the weather-dependent situation. And they have worked with the different companies before, and I think their suggestion should be considered.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the low bid, Richardson Construction, per, I forget the wording you said, allowing David to negotiate if there's an issue with weather.
Second.
Can I just say one thing? I would probably agree with Paige if Christie hadn't said that you are familiar and feel comfortable working with any of these contractors. That is a big thing for me. If, if, if that's the case, then, I mean, I'm kind of with the lower bidder, but if you had issues with any of them, then that would be a consideration.
And just for clarification, I have not personally worked with VCC, but they're reputable on the island, so. reputable on the island, so since I've been here, the town hasn't engaged with them.
Are you ready to vote?
I've only got one comment, and that's why, that is that we rely on our staff considerably to guide us in the right direction, and I don't see the three hundred dollars in this case is, if they feel that is the best way, then that's what I think, that's the direction we need to go. However, it's, doesn't look like it's going to.
All right, am I called for a vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Did you vote aye?
To keep from preventing this project to go, to stop, I'm in favor of, I guess, accepting the lower bid.
All right, it's four to one. Madam Clerk?
For three hundred dollars.
Yeah. Thank the staff for their hard work. All right, number thirteen, Holden Beach Pier Project. Tom Myers and Commissioner Thomas.
Well, the first one was by Smith and Dyer.
I'm sorry, Smith and Dyer first.
So we were hoping for the discussion and possible direction to staff to engage in the value engineering to reduce scope of work on pier and rebid the project. So at the last meeting, when we came in with the two bids that were higher, the engineers suggested that there was a different method of putting the pylons in. I'm not an engineer, so I'm not going to go through all that detail, and the question was, well, let's find out how much that is going to cost. So we had talked about to go ahead and proceed with that bid. I think at this point, getting ready to go into budget, we do have money budgeted for the pier. I think we need to bid with that new method that was discussed with Chip. The property owners need to be able to make an informed decision, and I don't think there's an informed decision can be made without knowing with this new method that's a possibility of repairing the pier, that we don't even get an idea of how much it costs to do this. I don't think it's going to hurt anything just to bid it to see where we stand so that the public can understand what cost, is it at budget, is it below budget? You know, what is it going to take for us to repair it to get people on the pier? I'm very encouraged by Will and the Alliance, and I think it's a good idea to have a committee formed. There's other, Surfside Beach did it. There's other beaches that have a pier that have a committee that's made up just for the pier. You get engineers, you get contractors, you get people with knowledge on there. You know, if the repairs come in at budget or below, do we repair the pier? And then our group goes to work and builds a new pier right next to it through the next four or five years? I don't know, but the property owners need to at least have the right to make an informed decision to know how much it's going to cost to repair the pier. Get this group as a pier committee in there to do some studies and let the public know what it's going to take to either repair the pier or get a new pier. We need a pier regardless, but if we don't even know where we stand, the public doesn't know where we stand. They need to be able to make informed decisions, knowing what things cost, and we need to listen to the public comment. People want the old pier. People want new piers. People want the pier. So let's get to work. Let's find out how much it would cost to repair it. Let's get a committee formed, and let's keep moving forward.
I just want to add in that we have been working on this project for several years. It is nothing that's new. We have all the information here. The work that's going to be done to do what we considered phase one of the pier was to get the pier itself open. Now, as far as this building and what we get done with that and the master plan, that can be tweaked or changed as we move forward. But as far as getting the pier open and usable, again, as Mr. Carter says, I was here when they were building the pier too, and they jetted those pylons in the ground. That's the end of the sand. I watched it being done. I watched it, they did it from above. It was quite interesting to a ten-year-old boy. But I'm telling you, what we need to do is get the staff to engage with the architects about getting a bid out for jetting the pylons in. We wasted enough time, which is of the essence, I think, if we're going to try to get it open any time this year. And if we want to keep revisiting that pier plan, we're just spending money on top of money. In other words, our taxpayers are the ones that are footing the bill, and we've got a good plan. We had it ready to go and to stop and basically try to start over or, now as far as the building is concerned, there's a lot that can be changed possibly there as far as in-use and that kind of stuff, but we need to get the pier open. And I just want to, again, as we've seen tonight, this is probably, my motion probably won't go far, but I would like to ask the staff, to make a motion to ask the staff to do some value engineering with jetting in the pylons and get us some reasonable bids so we know where we're at.
That's a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I understand where you guys want to go. I am an engineer, and I have requested, as reflected in the December nineteenth minutes, to meet with the engineer and staff to discuss this project, to review it, and talk about some of the aspects going forward. For instance, jetting piles in. These piles need some way to determine what the pile capacity is. That requires certain types of testing. Given the location and the existing structure, I don't know if we can do that. So I want to have a discussion with the engineers about that and a few other things. The other part is, before we start pouring money in this financial hole, I'd like to have some idea how deep it is, because there's, you know, get the pier open for now and then fix, fixes needed, but what does that mean? Are we going to be looking at another couple million dollars in five years to continue to put it together? It's not appropriate to go out for bids to contractors to gain budget numbers. I don't know if that's even legal. Now, if you want to get the engineer to give you his budget estimates, and I'm assuming he gave you those for the current contracts back when you guys were looking at the house and the building, and then for the pier, he can give you an estimate, but it's not okay to go out and say, hey, Mr. Contractor, we don't really feel like going through with this. We just want you to give us your best guess. I don't think you're allowed to go shopping for bids. That was my understanding when I was a project manager with the city of Wilmington and with the Army Corps of Engineers. Last, I think we need to go through the budget process and find out where the pier falls with regard to all the other priorities we're facing. You know, there's, you know, our beach and inlet fund is pretty, pretty low. We've got a water study going on that's going to have some implications, a stormwater study that's going to have some implications. I don't know what the fallout will be when we put these bike lanes in. And I realize you guys have been working on this for three years, but I don't feel that we need to just keep running down that path until I get my questions answered.
Yes, sir.
To me, this is very much like the motion that was made at the last meeting in December, and I'll give the same answer that I gave then, which is I believe it's irresponsible to start down a spending path without knowing where you're going, how much it will cost, and how we're going to pay for it. And what I mean by where we're going, there's really three paths that can be taken here. We can repair it, we can replace it, or we can demolish it. If we do nothing, nature will demolish it for us, so do-nothing's really not an option, I don't think. So it's repair or replace, and that gets down to the cost. I think the numbers that Will gave me is, you know, a cement pier costs twenty million dollars, lasts for fifty years. So that's pretty easy math. Four hundred thousand dollars a year is an annualized cost for a new pier. So nobody said this two-point-one million, is that going to give us five years? In which case, that even costs more. So we, we need the cost for repair, and we need to compare that against the cost for a brand-new cement pier. And I'm not convinced at this point that it's not cheaper to go with a new pier, because I do not know how much money we're going to spend trying to get this pier back from the grave and turn it into what it looked like in the nineteen fifties or sixties or wherever we want to take. I don't know where we're going with it, and I don't know what it's going to cost to get there. Whole separate issue, different day, is how we're going to pay for it, because we're not that big of a community to be taking on twenty-million-dollar piers.
So the estimate that they gave us for this type of work that Chip talked to us about was between seven hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars. There's a million dollars for the budget line in the pier from last year for that procedure. So we're not asking to spend any money at this point. All we're asking is to find out how much it's going to cost in a reasonable manner to repair the pier.
My point is, if we decide to build a new pier, has been discussed tonight, any money we spend on the pier now is wasted money, a million bucks, because we're not going that way.
I haven't said we're spending it. I just want to get a cost so we can look at what we have as a budget, but then the people can know how much we're looking at to have it repaired, to make an informed decision about, do we repair it? Do we build a new one? I mean, we don't, we don't, I don't understand what it's going to hurt to get a bid.
I would love to have costs, but I would love to have costs for twenty-year period or whatever reasonable period. This scope of work that we're talking about is the bare bones to make it, say, sixteen piles. There's a hundred and nineteen piles out there, so, you know, that's the beginning of a long journey to spend money on the pier. So if we can get good costs, I don't think we have to go out to bid, do the economic analysis, do the estimating, how much would it cost in total to get this pier where we want to take it, which I assume is lasting another ten years, twenty years? I don't know what we're trying to get out of it, but we need to look at that cost. We don't want to look at the very first piece, because this is the first shovel of money we're throwing into the hole, and we need to know how deep that hole is before we keep shoveling in.
That's what I'm asking for a bid, so we know how deep the hole is.
That's not how I'm interpreting it. I'm interpreting it for this scope of work that was bid, which was the bare bones, sixteen piles, just to start.
It wasn't the bare bones. It was what he, the engineer told us we needed to do to get it repaired, to get it open.
Right, which is sixteen piles out of a hundred and nineteen. It's not the total cost that we're going to have to spend for the pier.
So can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
This is, to me, the exact same motion that we rejected in December, so I'm surprised that it's back again, because I feel we need to have the big picture of what is the whole thing going to cost and not keep putting million-dollar Band-Aids on it. And until we get that, I'm not in favor of spending any money on repairing it until we can see the big picture.
Any more comments?
Can we not do thirteen A and B's on the question?
Yes, sir, you are, sorry. All right, I'm going to call a question. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion fails, three to two, Madam Clerk. All right, we're on thirteen B. Mr. Myers and Ms. Thomas.
Yeah, this is to start the process of getting public input, to start the process of coming up with a plan, the path we want to take forward with the pier. I'm envisioning this very similar to the public input session we had with Selfish Park recently, if you were here. There were placards up with the designs and the plans, and this is what we're talking about, and people could walk around and get questions answered, understand what the plans were, and then fill out input cards. There, they had little index cards. They could write their comments, whatever they thought, send it in. So I'm viewing this as a first step in public input on the pier where we would have, and I believe it needs to be the architect, because I think the architect's the only one who has the plans and the drawings and diagrams, present it, open it up for the public to look at it, ask questions, understand what those plans are, submit input, and then have that input summarized and brought back to us in terms of this is what input was collected. So it's very much a public input session, and hopefully, we can explore, repair, replace, you know, perhaps we could get into, I think, you know, a pier committee is a good idea. I mean, we had a parking committee that dealt with the parking issue before it came to the board. Pier committee could be similar to a parking committee where they deal with all pier issues and bring it here to the board and really offload us, and this is a big project. So this is just the first step, to have a public input session. We did put a placeholder on the schedule, the calendar that we just discussed earlier. I think it's on for February twenty-ninth at five o'clock to have a session. We would, and Tom Manager, please confirm we need to do this. We may need to change his scope of workers' contract to have him support this, but my understanding, he's the best one, because he's got all, he did the work up till now. He's got the drawings, he's got the diagrams. He's in the best position to explain it to the public.
I think its scope would have to be amended. I have to engage.
Okay.
You make the motion, or are you...
I'm not going to, I'm going to hear discussion, but the motion would be to do that, to modify his scope so that he could support a public input session and to move forward with Holden on the twenty-ninth of February.
Now, second.
I guess I made a motion.
Well, you said would be. Is it or not?
I'll make the motion for discussion. I'm open to amending it, but I move to...
Motion made. Any second? All right, discussion.
So how much is a public input session like he's talking about cost?
I have no idea. I couldn't tell you.
How much do we spend for the Selfish?
It wasn't laid out like that. It wasn't laid out. It was an entire script work for all of the processes.
Give her a microphone, because we can't hear. Thank you.
I don't, I don't think the Selfish Park was laid out that. It was a tire total for all the scope of work, and the public input session was just one of the things that was part of the scope of work.
So instead of a public input session, why don't we just form the pier committee and let them do this work and get the input and stuff necessary, so everything is ready, so when we're paying the architect to sit there, we're already prepared? I would suggest that we just go ahead and form the committee.
I'd like to offer up an opinion on committees. Just that, yeah, I understand the dialogue about paying a professional to come in and providing services, but there's also a cost of those committees. Now you have working groups, they're meetings, they're public meetings, they have to be attended, they have to be monitored, they have to be managed and memorialized, so there's a cost for that, too.
More discussions.
One thing I'd like to say about that, David, to your point, this pier committee is going to, is not, I don't see it functioning as our normal committees do with a monthly meeting. This is going to be more along the lines of a project delivery team, which is much more intense. So if you're going to be on this committee, you're going to have to put in a whole lot of time, and because you're under public meeting law, that makes, makes it extra challenging, just as David pointed out. So I like the idea of somehow having that committee to examine all this stuff. I don't know that we're ready to create it, and I think we would have to give it some marching orders, which we're not going to figure out tonight.
So I believe my motion was just to hold a public input session. I don't think I moved to create a committee. Is that correct? Have it...
Yeah, I was just starting to...
It was just a discussion, I'm sorry.
Read, read the motion, Madam Clerk, please.
Sure. It's not word for word, but to modify the scope for the architect so he can support a public input session for February twenty-ninth with the meeting, correct?
That's correct, and it is scheduled right now on the calendar, I believe, so...
Yes, so, but if you modify the scope of work, there'll be a cost, so I'm sure David's going to have to bring it back before the board, before...
Yeah, we'll meet again before the twenty-ninth, so...
Right, so you should, as long as it all works out, that should be fine.
So do we need a motion, or just instruct him to find it out, and then make a motion then?
You're asking me to withdraw it?
No, that's not what I asked. I said, do we need a motion for that? Or do we just instruct him to do that, and then once he gets the information, then we can...
It's in the motion, I believe. Is that correct?
I have a question regarding the specifics of the motion. I mean, it, my understanding of it is that to have the architect to conduct a public input session... have the architect to conduct a public input session, will you elaborate public input session for the purpose of what?
Of collecting public opinion on the existing pier plans. It's very, I'm viewing it very similar to Sailfish Park.
Because he's going to ask, what, what, what? I mean, he's going to say, what?
Yeah, no, I know it was different consultant for Sailfish, but I mean, I witnessed it. It seemed to work pretty well. People were engaged. People provided a lot of input. They got their questions answered, and hopefully we see the input from that and we can bring back and use to make our decision.
So is that the input on the bids that we rejected at the last meeting for the two, the scope of the work that was for that bid?
This, what I'm talking about is just the plan, the placards, you know, what is the current plan as exists today, the master plan for the pier, and have it for people to see and have it for people to ask questions about and have it for people to give input on, good or bad.
So is that just on the pier or is that including the whole property that he has the original plans?
The building and the pier structure.
Phase one, I guess you would say, right? Whatever.
Or one and two. I mean, it's the, it's the repair path of the pier, you know, where are we going if we go down the path to repair it?
But are we talking about just, because what the plan the architect has, are you talking about the original plan of the pier, the pier building, the campground, the decking, all that stuff? Or are we just talking about where we cut out the part and just did the pier and the ADA compliant entry?
I think it should be the whole plan.
It should be a whole thing.
The whole plan.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm asking you.
Pier, pier property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Pier property, including parking, including campground.
Because what they did for Sailfish is they put up two different options, and then a lot of people said, well, I don't like the bathroom, or I don't want you to do anything with it, or I don't, I really like the number one. So that's why we're envisioning it similar to what they did there, so that people can input into the, everything that they see that's the plan.
But right now, we just have one plan. I mean, this is the plan that we're going down the pathway, so there's not an A and a B here. It's just, this is, this is where we stand. This is where we're going. This is the plan.
What do you think?
I understand the motion that's on the floor.
Any more discussion? All right, you ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Silence means a yes, so that's a unanimous vote, yes. Five, five no, Madam Clerk.
Five yes.
All right, now we're switching it around.
All right, ready to move on? Mr. Myers, I believe, do we have 15 next?
Yeah, we've switched them, yes.
We're on number 15. We've gone from 13 to 15. Mr. Parfus and Mr. Myers.
Okay, so a year ago, our engineer, Ryan Angle Engineering, did a condition assessment and a report on the state of the pavilion, and the conclusion was, I'll just read parts of it here. It's the closing paragraph from that report. The pavilion was not repaired or improved in accordance with the engineering plans that were completed in 2010. The cost will likely exceed the extent of the current value. We recommend consideration be given to replacement of the existing pavilion. Repair replacement plans should be completed within the next 12 months and the repair, replacement, or demolition occurring within the subsequent 12 months. So this report was from February of last year. So that first 12 months is up. I think we need to do something. I would imagine we need to have Ryan Angle come out here, do another reassessment of the condition. Where do we stand now? There's been work that's been done by the town on it, but we really need to know if it's safe. You know, it's a while, but concerts will be coming up. I think the festival's coming up. I don't know if there's other things that are going on there, but I really think we need to figure out where we stand and start to make plans for what we do and where we go from here. No motion, just discussion. I, yeah.
Are we doing? I'm confused as to where we are.
We jumped to 15.
We're on 15.
All right, I got it now. Thank you.
Mr. Parfus, did you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, I've got a couple of words. I'm concerned about the safety of the pavilion, and that's what we need to determine. If it's not safe, we shouldn't use it, and that has negative connotations, but we have a report to say there are safety concerns, and if there is an accident, the town's going to be totally liable for it because we were told by engineers that there's a problem with it. So I think it's important we find out what the current condition is and do we think it's safe to use for another season.
Any more comment?
Once this report came out, I was under the impression that there was repairs made and that was monthly inspections on the pavilion. Is that correct?
Mr. Evans, can you help us with that, please?
Give Mr. Evans a microphone. There you go.
Okay, as far as the pier, as far as the pier goes, we were following the direction of.
Pavilion.
I mean, pavilion. We were following the direction of the engineer's letter. We went out, back out and reassessed that we actually carried the original contractor out there. The report itself, the report itself is, is pretty clear about what the, what the issues are with it. The original plan that was brought before the board back in 2010 after I originally condemned it, that board chose to go with, and I think there's a kind of a misstatement in here, they had two alternatives. They could brace it and then use heavy metal straps to tie the front, the top and the bottom together, because when it was originally built and inspected, it didn't meet any of the minimum requirements. That's why I condemned it. So we did some heavy bracing up there. They did those repairs. The scope of the work for the engineering did not include all of the state required ADA compliance issues down there, and it doesn't mention the fact that we had to almost completely replace the pier that went down to the water because the materials that were used were the wrong materials and had many defects in it. There is a full report that went to NCDII back in 2010. Now, I read, I read this report and I saw this report, and the report is accurate to the fact that the board chose not to go with the full repair, but to go with the temporary fix, and, and we permitted it. It was done by Arthur Robbins, who is a commercial, he has a commercial license, and he did a very good job. We, after report, after the board was talking about it and decided to go with an engineer report, I read the report and I took him back out there, and we, what we did was took additional measurements to determine if it had moved any, and we couldn't tell that it had moved since the, the temporary fix was put in place. Now, it was definitely temporary. If you go all the way back to 2010 and probably many, many meetings after that, you'll hear what I commonly call say, and there is nothing more permanent than something temporary, and I most likely said it then. So what we have, what we have here is an engineer report, and the engineer report called for us to take a look at it and make the decision. Last summer, we made the decision to try to protect the town from the deficiencies in it, to put up X-bracing to try to stop it from racking in. If it racks anymore, I'm not sure it can be braced. If it continues to deteriorate in the condition that he's cited, in other words, what's happening is the structural members have, have been accessed or open to the weather as they are, and the fasteners have weathered over time. We are reaching a point where we're going, if the, if the Board of Commissioners does not decide to do something with the pavilion, then staff has reached the point where they're going, they're getting really close to having to take some action like we took in 2010. That's where we're at with the pavilion. So the report is pretty clear, and, but at what point, we assess it, just about every month, we take a trip up there and we assess it again, but at some point in time, it's going to reach that factor where we will no longer be, be able to let the town use it. We'll have to condemn it. We'll put a notice on it, and it'll be condemned. And at that point, you're going through the state process whereby we will have to have some discussions, and those discussions will be with me as the authority having jurisdiction to have to take that action. So, and there's three remedies, it's sort of like yours when you have for the pier. There's three remedies under that statute.
Okay, my assumption is that we need to have Ryan Angle come out, that we're not, I mean, to do a current assessment. Theirs was a year ago. They said to, you know, come up with a plan within a year. Reading between the lines, I don't know that we're quite ready to condemn it ourselves. It'd be better to have them come here and give us an updated report.
Right. I think that, that you need to have, I think they need to come back and do a reassessment on it. I think they're gonna, I think they'll come back and give you a more thorough report now. They have a year from the date that they've looked at it to take another look at it, and it'll give them a better idea because, you know, it's like somebody said earlier, everything has a service life, and as it moves forward, it's easier to tell how much time is left. But it was, it was poorly built in the beginning. I think we did really well to keep it as long as we have, the way it is. You're either going to have to go back and do the original fix, which is expensive, and that's why they chose not to do it. It was expensive then. It would be expensive now. It would basically have to tear up both ADA ramps, the new one we installed and the one that's there, to try to get the piles in beside the ones they are and make them continuous. And then you still got the top of that structure, which, which is, the design itself lends itself to problems. It's problematic as far as a high wind zone and the areas that are, and the way it's built. The cupola in the top of it's a real issue.
I'm ready to make my motion. All right.
So is it the roof mainly that's the problem, or is it the, and the ramps, or is the stage in good condition?
The problem, the problem was when it was originally built, it was not built to the design parameters of the engineer that designed it. It was, it didn't even come close. And because of that, it caused it to rack, and when a structure raps, you either got to bring it all the way back to where it needs to be, or, or you got to take action to keep it from racking anymore, because you, you reach a point of failure when, when it moves like that. But it is the whole structure. We, the contractor before, we had to cut the floor, put in heavy brackets. Well, anybody knows that while those brackets will help us keep it from flying away, they're not going to stop it from racking. You're an engineer. They ain't going to stop it from racking, and, and they don't have any lateral strength. They got all the uplift strength in the world, but they're not going to stop it from going one way or the other or racking like it is now. And, you know, I think it's a testament to bolts and brackets and nails that it's stood through all these tests that we've had. And, and the bracing, there was some pretty, that's some pretty stout bracing that was put on that structure, and the piles that are holding that are pretty deep. So, you know, I felt comfortable we weren't going to hurt somebody. I don't feel that comfortable now.
All right, Mr. Myers, you ready?
Yes, I move that we engage Ryan Angle to come back out, do a reassessment of the condition of the pavilion and report to us, and I would like to instruct staff not to use it until we get that report.
Looking for a second.
I'll second that.
More discussion.
Is that going to involve canceling the concerts?
If it's not safe to use a pavilion, yes, and if we can't find another place to hold them, but I am not, I mean, based on what I've heard our building inspector say and based on what I read in this engineering report, I think we are at risk, and I'm not comfortable using it.
More discussion. Anybody?
So in your opinion, it's not safe to use the, for the concerts?
I think there's a real, I think it puts me in a bad position to have this engineered document that states that it does have failures in it. I condemned it in 2010. We did a temporary fix. We are now 14 years into that, and I think it puts me, it, believe it or not, I'm, I'm not exempt from liability, and I am the one that's supposed to really look out for the life, safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of this town. And, you know, it puts me in a bad position, but it don't make me sleep good at night knowing I got this engineer report and knowing the condition of that structure up there.
So it's January. I feel like we should be able to get this report before we're talking about doing any concerts, so we know for sure whether it's, you won't get a report before the concerts start?
Their, their contracts have to be signed because they want a lock in sure that you're going to have them perform. I have a stack of those on my desk that are waiting attention, but they also, we have to go to press for our schedule because we do a combination press release with the county. So I understand your position. I'm just saying it may impact. I probably will have to let them know that we, if that's the direction the board goes, and then we may lose those slots because they may not want to continue to maintain a verbal.
So when do you have to really let them know, one way or the other?
We're normally done by this time of year with everything. We're calling right now. They're verbally holding those dates for us, and typically the concert meeting is scheduled for February, and we usually have that released on the full schedule.
So I've seen some portable stages that we might be able to use. If we could put something over, I hate to say it, but on Black Q, we could, there's, I've seen stages that you can set up over there, and they fold out into a truck, and you pack them back up into a truck.
I'm not, I don't, sometimes I don't know when I should speak or not, but anyway, the, the top of it is the problem. The stage itself is not a problem. Stage itself is perfectly safe. This, the, it's the top. It's, the connections were originally supposed to go all the way to the bottom of the foundation, and they toenail those large piles into the top of that thing, and it would be, it would not be hazardous if the top of it was not over the top of it.
So can we remove the top until we get the engineering?
If you, if you're asking me from a planning standpoint, what my recommendation would be, my recommendation would be to go at the guardrail height, cut the top off of it, get you some wind sails over the top of it, and have you concerts.
Right.
But that, that's me speaking.
Well, Tim and I have discussed that. We, what we want to do is get Ryan Angle to confirm, yeah, that gets rid of the safety issue, make sure there's nothing else. So I think we need to get Ryan Angle out there and give us another assessment, because Tim and I talked about that a couple of weeks ago.
I don't disagree with that. I disagree with stopping the use of it.
Yeah, I don't, I would like not to, but it's a safety issue potentially, and it would be a shame not to have concerts, but to have an accident would be a whole lot worse. So we need to move out and get the engineer.
He just said if we remove the roof, we could still use the stage.
I want the engineer to confirm that that will solve it. Paige, I do think it would.
Well, if we had boat park in a Black Q, we could use that for a stage.
Well, it's not happening.
I think Mr. Evans has pretty much told us, he's, he's actually told me before, things that are temporary seem to become permanent.
Yeah.
I just don't see the need in spending the money to have the group come out and tell us that it's still leaning and it still needs to be replaced. It probably won't be safe. Putting Tim in a bad situation. I think we, our tax dollars would be better spent simply removing the top and eliminating the issue. Instead of having somebody come back in and tell us the same thing again, even if it ain't racked any further, it's still temporary. So being temporary, why don't we just have the roof removed at regular height and then, and then put some, something over the top of it so the bands can play? Again, we don't, while we're spending money, you want to budget, budget this, budget this, it's all, it's all, we're spending money for something that we know the answer to. Our town inspector, our staff, is, is, is again saying, that's what we need to do.
I thought I heard the town inspector say that he recommends we get Ryan Angle in to give us their new report. That's what I heard Tim say.
Well, I, I would, I would feel comfortable if we did that. I don't know, I don't know. I think that whenever you alter that structure, it's going to have to have a new engineer seal on it. It's a public structure, and I do believe that the North Carolina. seal on it. It's a public structure. And I do believe that the North Carolina Building Code requires that an engineer reseal it and recertify it once. And so if you get that done before, but it doesn't have to be Right Angle, it could be any structural engineer. It could be any structural engineer that you can get to go take a look at it and say that if you take the top off, you know what I mean, the rest of the structure will be fine. I don't think you're gonna get anybody to sign off on, on it, the way, in the condition that it is now. But you may be able to get them to tell you that, that, that the platform itself is perfectly fine. So, yeah. But you're gonna have to have that seal one way or the other. If I was to go condemn it, North Carolina statute's gonna require you, after I give you the order to repair, vacate, or to demolish it, they're gonna have to, if you choose to, choose one of those, which is to repair, they would have to seal it, you know what I mean, and they would have to verify it, and then I would have to prove that, and it would have to go in the file before it could be ever occupied again. And believe me, it has to have an occupancy. It is an A4 assembly occupancy. Anything you put in this town where people can, can, can gather, has to meet the North Carolina Building Code, regardless of what, even if you put a big tent, just like this room. So it's, it, it's gonna be required to have a seal, no matter what you do. So whether you do it in the front or do it in the rear, you know what I mean, it's gonna have to be done.
I mean, my preference is figure out the long-term, you know, I don't think putting a tarp on it's gonna be a good long-term solution for the pavilion. It's gonna be a Band-Aid to get it through this season. I mean, I, I mean, in one option, I'm just looking at options, we could just tear the whole thing down, and then come in with a portable stage, and set up a portable stage in that exact same spot and hold the concerts.
I don't think you can, Tom, I don't think you can do that, because it's not paved under the pavilion, right? So you'd have to level it and pave it.
There's sand underneath it.
Yeah, so I'd like to call the question on this, because...
Wait, I wanna say one more thing. I just, I just wanna say, this report was from a year ago, and nothing's been done. So if you're gonna complain about not having the concerts this summer...
There has been something.
Okay, some repairs were made, but it's still not safe. It wasn't made safe in the last year in order to have the concerts this summer, and that's on you guys.
Excuse me?
I'd like to call the question on this.
This was never brought to my vote. This was a previous board.
This is correct.
The report is from a year ago.
This, this report was February of twenty...
And the repairs were made, and he's been inspecting it every month.
So why are we, why is it in this, why are we here? How did we get to this point? I mean, the report says that we were supposed to have a plan within twelve months, and that was in February last year. So next month is twelve months.
I was addressing her accusing me that this was my problem.
Well, we don't have a plan, and we're supposed to have a plan. So we're the board, it's our problem now, we need to deal with it.
Now we have a plan.
We need a plan.
Well, we can have a plan without not having the concerts. This is something that is a staple of the summer, that everybody looks forward to. I'm not saying let's, let's make it unsafe. We can make it safe enough to have the concerts and then revisit. This is something that was done in 2010.
May I say, please, that there's no reason to point fingers here. Let's get on with the vote. We need the guys to come out and look at it. That's what Tim's telling us. There's a safety concern. The sooner we get on with that, the sooner we can get on with taking the top off or whatever.
And I agreed with that, but I don't agree with stopping the concerts.
We haven't said that yet.
Yes, he said it.
Okay, let's get back to order. Madam Clerk, will you read the motion?
I'm engaged with Right Angle Engineering to come out and do a reassessment of the condition of the pavilion, and to do the report, instruct staff not to use it until we get the report.
Are you calling the question?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Three to two, Madam Clerk. Okay, so now we go back to number fourteen. Is that correct? Yes. All right, we're on number fourteen on the agenda. So this is the, this is the reason I wanted to switch it, because if we have a problem with where to hold the concerts, we do have Block Q, there is potential, in the short term and long term, to move the concerts there. Quite frankly, I'm looking forward to moving them away from that sewer station where they sit now, because it is quite smelly in certain times. So I, you know, my opinion, when I wrote this up, was it would go to Parks and Rec, because it seems like it's in their domain to deal with this kind of a situation. I guess I'm questioning now whether it's so urgent, we need to, to do something else. But the plan is, assuming that the pavilion's gonna go away, and we need a place for the concerts, and assuming we've got Block Q available, we should explore the opportunity to move the concerts to Block Q. And, and I want to address one of the questions that was up here. This is focused on the interior of Block Q. It is not dealing with the right-of-way, so the thought at this time is there's still boat parking around the right-of-way, which is thirty-some spots right now. So it's not gonna impact boat parking one way or another, it's gonna leave those. This is the green space within Block Q, and what we could do with it, and whether or not it could potentially be our new concert location. So I'll leave it at that, and we can have discussion. I think we probably need a motion to, to discuss, don't we? The motion would be to task the Parks and Recreation Board to work with the current architect, because he's got the drawings, and he's got the site plans, to, to...
Develop.
Develop potential site plans that would include the, the concert space, dance floor, the ADA compliant bathrooms, green space, and other amenities as, as they see desirable. And we put some examples out there, what they could be.
So I'll second that.
All right, motion made and seconded. Discussion, please.
Mr. Mayor, when can I offer an amendment to that motion?
Right now.
I'd like to make an amendment to specifically state boat parking.
In the perimeter, remains?
Well, you can put it in the perimeter. I don't necessarily want to tie Parks and Rec's hands, but in the perimeter if necessary. But I'd like a motion to make sure that as we give Parks and Rec a criteria, that boat parking is part of that criteria, because I think that's fundamental to why we got that property.
All right, it's a motion maker and a seconding party agreeing. I'm the motion, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I guess the legal, you know, I thought the parking was in the right-of-way, not on the property, but I'm, that's...
I still want it in there.
Okay, I'm good with that.
I'll, yeah, second.
All right, everybody understand what we've done.
I, I don't. One more, one more clarification. You mentioned boat trailer parking, or did I miss the reference to parking inclusive, too?
So we're saying in the perimeter.
I did say boat trailer parking. I think, recalling the site plan, there's some places in the perimeter where it's not big enough. Like on Quentin Street, there may not, or some areas, near the, where the new bathroom's gonna be, there may not be a big enough spot for a boat trailer, but certainly we could put some other car parking there. And, and to your, your point of specificity about including boat trailer parking within the perimeter, or are you talking about putting it, or just limiting it to be around? I'm not wanting to tie the committee's hands. I want them to consider the boat trailer parking and some car parking.
Okay.
So you're saying include it within the...
No, I'm not telling them where to put it.
That's what he was asking.
Yes, I'm telling, David's clear.
Wherever.
I don't want to tell them where to put it.
Okay, 'cause at first it was just the perimeter, this is what, he, so you're changing that, to include the whole property. Heather, can you read the motion back, Heather?
Well, I can. It changed a few times.
I know.
What, the original one was to have the Parks and Rec Board work with the current architect to develop optional site plans that would include concert space, dance floor, the planned ADA compliant bathrooms, green space, and other potential amenities. And then I think what we got to that we were adding on was that we would consider boat trailer parking and some type of car parking also.
Correct.
Okay, where are we? You got any more discussion?
I just wanted to make sure I knew what I was seconding.
Any more discussion?
So...
My only discussion at this point is, we're doing it all over again. We had a plan, and that included, the master plan, included green space and space for the pavilion. We knew that it was gonna have to be replaced at some time. So why are we, why are we gonna get the architect to do again what we've already done? Again, this seems to be a terrible waste of time and money to, to start all over again. I mean, we, we had a good plan, it's, it's still got, we've got to have boat parking. If you've got these guys with, with four-door pickup trucks and tandem axle, I mean, triple axle trailers and boats, you can't parallel park. I mean, you, I don't know if you've got a boat or use a boat, but if you ever tried to parallel park a boat trailer, you can't see it when you're backing up. I mean, come on, we need pull-through parking for the boats. If you want to reduce the number somewhat, great, but it's, the plan we had was a good plan, and it was a good start to the plan, and would still give ample green space for a pavilion and a place to have the amenities we want.
So I just want to add to what Rick said about, I, I'd hate to stop, but as far as we got, we've already got the plan for the, the peril, the pull-through parking. We've got the ADA bathrooms in the corner. We had discussed previously about putting the pavilion over there. From my understanding, the reason we had held off in the first phase of the plan to keep from slowing the boat parking down, since we did say with parking, we would pay parking, we would provide bathrooms and parking, and boat parking was specifically said for that property. With that, with that being said, we still left space, because the original plan for Block Q that was brought was two hundred and eighty-eight parking spaces, and that's when we backed off and said, let's put, pull through boat, uh, parking for the boats and the trailers, and leave the parallel parking on the outside, because the people with smaller boats could still parallel park the boats, the ADA bathrooms. The problem with putting the pavilion over there is you're gonna be facing residential homes. You're talking about South Shore Drive, Quentin Street, and part of Brunswick Avenue. So those people do need to have some input, and we can't start just having concerts over there, from my understanding, until we let these people stay, because the music and everything, every Sunday, is gonna be facing their homes. So some public input has to be put in before you just start having concerts over there, from my understanding.
We will have public input. I, I ask and ask and ask for the site plan that showed the pavilion on that property, and I've never been given one. Nobody seems to have one.
I just said we left it off that plan to not slow down the parking in the ADA bathrooms, because those were the first essentials that we discussed, because the boat parking was promised with the buying of the property. The ADA bathrooms were promised. If we told, we told people, we're gonna start charging for parking, we were gonna provide bathrooms. Those bathrooms have to be ADA compliant. The bathrooms on the bridge are not good bathrooms. We discussed that. We started with the ADA bathrooms. We didn't put the plan for the pavilion in there, because we have to determine, can it be turned this way? Can it be turned with a backup against those people's houses? Those people have a right, those residents have a right to have the input put in about that. So it wasn't put in that plan to keep from slowing the process down.
But the space was left there on purpose, for that purpose.
Some people may still want the pavilion where it is.
What's your pleasure? More discussion? You want to vote? What are you gonna do?
Vote.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Three to two, Madam Clerk. Number sixteen on the agenda. Audit Committee items. Town Clerk Fennel.
Oh, so mine is two-part. First, the board needs to appoint a commissioner to the audit committee, and then after that, the board needs to select two members to be added to the committee from the people that were interviewed today or interested. I've got ballots before you. If you want to do the commissioner out loud, I actually didn't do ballots, because I...
What's the pleasure of the board in appointing a commissioner? You want to vote out loud, or secret ballot, or?
I think we should...
Hands up, hands down. What are you gonna do?
No, I think we just vote out loud.
All right, Chair's looking for a motion of a name.
I make a motion to recommend Tom Myers.
All right, all right. Is there any other nomination? Hearing none, do you agree on acclamation?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you agree by acclamation?
Yes.
We don't have a choice.
All right, by acclamation, that means you did it without necessitively vote. Okay?
And then the second part, I have ballots before you, if you want to vote by ballot?
Yes. All right, B, sixteen B. Alan, you're all over mine.
That's all right.
Or maybe we need to do verbal.
I could get you one. Let me check that. I'll get you my...
Sorry about that. It's always one, isn't there?
Well, you know what, I lied, but if you do any alternate ones, then just select two instead of one. I was gonna do that.
Same names.
All right, here we are. Thank you very much. If you want to wait for me, you can, or if you want to move on, I'm not offended, completely up to you.
What's the pleasure? You gonna...
I could tell you and give it to you in the back.
I couldn't hear you.
If you want, I could tell you and give it to you in the back.
All right, we're gonna move on then. We're going to seventeen. Discussion on possible approval of Resolution 2401. Town Manager Hewitt.
Yes, sir. The action requested is to update the existing bank signature cards to include the Assistant Town Manager and subsequent designation of the Assistant Town Manager as Deputy Finance Officer. The Physical Control Act requires that all checks be signed by the Finance Officer or a property designated Deputy Finance Officer, and then countersigned by another local government official. Recent events and current manpower configurations have illuminated the need to formally upgrade the town's procurement procedures. This is a detail that probably should have been remedied when the manager's contract was revised back in March, but alas, it's taken the recent events of currency to illuminate the need that we need to change it.
Microphone, give us your name and so forth, again, please, sir. We have to have that on the record.
Ryan Williams. So it's kind of clear from the get-go about Block Q and the discussion about it, which direction it was heading. I was trying to avoid this, as far as this goes, especially when the lawyer resigned there, but I've made some phone calls this week, there was some legal representation, about what you can and can't do down there. And in the discussion, how you've got it listed, it says a discussion over Block Q. It doesn't have a discussion over moving the concert to Block Q. Have you consulted the DOT and the wildlife as to, if you can hold the concert there? Clearly not. And I have. When you have festivals down there, you close the road. There's pretty strict rules on the wildlife ramp. They don't play. Number one, you can't park. You have to use the facility for what it's intended for. Put your boat in. You can park your car, but you better get on a boat. Number two, you can't block access. Now, when you block the access, every festival that's ever been had, you've done it under the good graces of the DOT, because nobody has complained. Everybody's got along. Everybody understands, it's grown together. The boat ramp was there first. Well, I'll take that back, the festival's there first, but the boat ramp moved there, but everything has grown gradually together, and everybody's worked together. When you upset somebody, and they start complaining, don't expect to have the same things you've always had, such as blocking a road. You're gonna have trucks and trailers. North Carolina wildlife severely frowns upon hundreds of people walking in the street. The entire time, when you block that off, you drive around Quentin Street. That's not the same access. The reason why that boat ramp was chosen at that location is because it had wide enough access to pull into. Now you're wanting to hold festivals and events on a weekly basis with hundreds of people in the street, and encircling it with trucks and trailers. people in the street, and encircling it with trucks and trailers. It would be no different if I built a concert hall and expected my patrons to stand out on Highway Seventeen. They get away with it down there in Myrtle Beach at SOS Week, they dance in the street all the time. And, and you can probably do it somewhere else, but you're not gonna be able to dance in the street in front of that wildlife ramp. You need to consult, especially what you can and can't do. It was always assumed that you can do that, and I can tell you, you're gonna have some complaints. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
One last thing. The other fact about the pier situation, I would think of a fact, is it's the longest-owned, family-operated pier continuously standing from here to Georgetown. It was deemed unsafe to walk on. The following year, we had a hurricane, and every pier from there to Georgetown, I saw with my own eyes, sustained substantial damage or completely failed, including the ones that were engineered beyond belief. Whatever you put in that ocean, I don't care how you engineer it, the ocean can take it away. And I understand what happens, but it's a perishable item. And turning a blind eye and letting it collapse for the red tape and not trying to say, it takes away any chance of actually saving it. I don't care what your engineer says. And I understand that there's load calculations and this and that, but wood floats. And that piling, how they drive it, there are certain places where you go in that piling, where you go through the hardpan, it'll disappear. Some things just don't work out on paper in the ocean, and you'll find out at a hard point. So turning a blind eye, the pier that was unsafe, it's still standing, and every one failed.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else want to speak about anything?
Just wanna say something about the pier. I was talking to Gil the other day, and some things you don't understand are, all the piers that were built in the fifties were used creosote posts, right? They quit doing that in between seventy and eighty. They quit doing arsenic posts right around oh-five, oh-four. So all we have now is salt-treated posts. Char, the Diamond Head Pier in Charleston, they replaced every single post in nineteen ninety-five. They just finished putting in the concrete, they'll be opening in the spring of twenty twenty-four, with brand-new concrete, because every one of those pylons they put in got eaten up by worms, okay? Everything that's wood is gonna go away. Everything that's wood that's not creosote, we still got houses here in the seventies, everybody knows they got creosote posts in them. Man, you can use those things for the next fifty years. Only problem is, gives everybody cancer, so couldn't use those. And arsenic kills cows. As far as the gazebo, Tim, uh, you know how we put up metal buildings, and we put in the metal, uh, got eye bolts at the top and the bottom with cables to hold it in straight? Now, we could take cables, put eye bolts in the tops and the bottoms of your toenail, toenail, uh, posts, right? Pull it up straight with turnbuckles, and you come out of the quarter end, quarter edge of the, uh, quarter edge of the posts, where the roof line is, go straight down to the ground in the ground anchors. You can pull it straight, that thing will never blow away. You could fix it with a little bit of money without going through all this cutting the roof off. Tim, that works, doesn't it?
Because it's got an engineer seal on it.
I'm gonna tell you, they got, I've got, I've got buildings, I got thousand-foot buildings, and, and they've, the only thing they got is little, little teeny metal screws about this big, but what, what, they'll, they'll stand a hundred-and-fifty mile an hour wind because of the cables inside holding the steel beams like this. So before you go spending too much money, I just wanna try and give you a simple solution. Call up an engineer, see if he can't find some cables, put them in a crossways on the three walls, and you take all four corners, put them down to the ground in a concrete anchor, and that thing will never go anywhere. But anyway, that's all I got to say about that, and we need a new concrete pier.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to talk about anything? You want, no, we've got some activity on the left. Far, far left, lady in the back. Virginia Tech is here.
Marty Airwood, one fourteen Shrimp Street. Looking at your schedule and knowing my working schedule, I am not real sure that I can come to budget meetings, so I'm gonna put this out to you right now. East end of the beach needs about five thousand more trashcans. Put it in the budget, because you cannot, down there, put one trashcan for every public access. It's not gonna happen, and frankly, some of us that live down there and have been down there a long time hate spending our Mondays on our nice little stroll with the black trash bag picking up everything. These people are not going to walk fifteen yards to find an empty trashcan. They are not going to, uh, if there's a full trashcan, they're not going to say, oh, that trashcan's full, let's take our bag of garbage home. So since I don't know when this is planned, we need trashcans, and we need lots of them on the east end, and we need a lot of them at the public accesses. Please, very much thank you.
I saw some more hands. Yes, ma'am. Yep.
Seems like a lot of us are visiting twice today. Regina Martin, ten thirty-two Ocean Boulevard West. Uh, while I was a little bit surprised, my, what I was going to request was that our town attorney, which we no longer have, uh, to address our town charter and how it coincides with our, um, rules of procedure, and if there are any conflicts in that. Since we don't have a town attorney currently, I assume you all will have to do that at the next meeting and go out to try to find us a town attorney. In the meantime, I would like to, uh, ask if possibly Heather could post our charter, our town charter on the town. I don't believe it's there. Is it?
It, it's part of the Code of Ordinances, it's the first page of the Code of Ordinances.
Oh, okay. All right. Is, is the amendment there as well, and do people know that?
There was no amendment to the charter.
For the staggered, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm out of place, because I'm not supposed to be engaging.
I'm sorry. I thought that the original charter was amended at one point. I thought there was one amendment that I saw on the state website. Now, I could be wrong. I thought when we changed the form of, of our government, was there not a amendment to the charter?
I'm not supposed to be answering. It's not engaging back and forth.
Okay, all right. I'm just, I'm just asking. I don't know.
Sorry, I was being out, I was being out of turn.
Okay. I, I have, I don't have a, I don't know.
But any, any changes to any ordinances and charters are on, they're in the codebook, so that's all I'm.
All right. And the codebook is on there?
Yeah, sure is.
All right. Thank you so much.
I still saw another hand back there. Dr. Caldwell. Dr. Caldwell.
This is truly a general comment, but, uh, listening, what?
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Phil Caldwell. I live at one-twenty-one South Shore Drive. Listening tonight, I'm thinking about how polarized our country is at the present time, and I don't think that's healthy. It goes back to item eleven that, that you walked on tonight, definitely polarizing, and I think, uh, uh, that's, that's, it's just not healthy. I think Commissioner Myers mentioned earlier, this is a small community, not a whole lot of people here, and a lot of us know each other. I would caution you to be more sensitive to each other's needs.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Wasn't there one more hand up in left rear? Or have I got everybody? Anybody anywhere else? Right rear.
I'm Lawrence Smith, and I live in Supply. We own the second oldest restaurant in this area that I know of. We're in, we've been in business for thirty-three years. There's one other that has been here for forty-five years. Um, and I have to tell you, everything that goes on this room affects my business, whether it's positive, whether it's negative, whatever it is that affects my business. What I've seen so far from our three new commissioners is sha, is ashamed and disgusting. We have people come to this island, they come in my business, and they ask me all the time, when will the pier be open? When will the pier be open? And I get to tell them, again, our former commissioners and our two standing commissioners were ready to open that pier. Unfortunately, our new commissioners have decided they're gonna spend more money to start all over. Same thing with Block Q. They come in and they say, hey, where can we park our large boat? Go down to Sunset, go to Ocean Isle. Can't do it here. It's, it's very disheartening at times, and in lieu of that, I, I looked up the charter, and I would like to read something if I can. Standards of conduct for town officials. The proper operation of democratic government requires that public officials and employees be independent, impartial, and responsible to the people. Government decisions and policy must be made in proper channels of a governmental structure. Public office must not be used for personal gain, personal interest, and the public must have confidence in the integrity of its government. And there's a part B to this. The subcharter is adopted to establish guidelines for ethical standards of conduct for such officials by setting forth some of those acts or actions that may be incompatible with the best interest of the town. To that end, all town officials, here and after, defined as including the mayor, members of the town board of commissioners, planning and zoning, board of adjustment, town manager, department heads, the town attorney, and all other town employees shall, shall be subject to and abide by the standards of conduct set forth in this subchapter. I ask the three new commissioners to do that. Have a code, have a, have your ethics, have your morals, your integrity, and your standards in place. Right now, it is sad to come in here and see what you've done. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Smith, Dr. Dyer, thank you so much for your service. Y'all have a good evening.
Anyone else want to talk about anything? Yes, sir.
Still John Pierce, one-twenty-three Burlington. I'm speaking for myself this time. A couple of things that were brought up. I, I would like some clarity, as I'm sure others would, about the surprise resignation, to me anyway, of the town attorney. I know there were a number of issues that were brought up with regards to the charter and how it fit in with some of the new rules and procedures, and I remember that from this meeting was quite, quite contested. But nonetheless, I'm sure there's a plan to get a new attorney on board, and before we get weeks and weeks down the road, figure out how the charter and fits with the new rules and procedures that were adopted based on what the attorney says. If I've missed something, I apologize, but I just don't know where the attorney situation fits into all that. I, like the previous speaker, I didn't, got long-winded before, I didn't get to say this, but I am so tired of answering questions from people in the community and, and, and others from the area, you know, what are you gonna do with the pier? And when I try to explain them, it's in jeopardy, they say the same thing, many of them. Why would a Ocean Island town get rid of an asset of a pier going out one thousand, a thousand feet? Why, why would they do that? And, and it's hard for me to explain, so I'll reiterate what has been said tonight. Whether it's a new pier, according to what some people want, I don't care. We need a pier, and I appreciate you working on it, all of you. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
My name's Jeremy Ridenour. One-O-Egg Jordan Boulevard, H.B. Charlie Stocks Mine, and all Coastal Carolina Construction over there on the island. From what I'm hearing tonight, everyone you live out here on the island, if your window leaks on your house, the first thing you're gonna do is you're gonna call a contractor, and you're gonna get somebody to fix it. It's called protecting your investment. Whenever that pier was built, it was, it was an investment. Let's protect it. Let's get it fixed, let's get it put together before hurricane season rolls around here and does more damage to it than what we can stop. Same thing with that pavilion. Let's protect our investment. The voters voted for it to be here, and it was a good idea at the time, so let's protect that investment, put it back together, so the people that originally voted it can still use it.
Thanks, sir. All right. Anyone else want to talk about anything? Last call. All right. We're gonna go to number nineteen on the agenda. Town managers report.
Yes, sir. I'd like to start with some positive news tonight, and hopefully it'll lighten the mood a bit. I'm gonna call out Tim Evans, Daniel McReany, and Kristy Ferguson. If y'all would stand, please. Tim hadn't gotten an award, but he's standing in for Carrie Redwine, and at the, at the, at the, at the, at the risk of being redundant, it may have been reported before, but Carrie has received her building level one certification, that's to go with her plumbing and mechanical, and certainly has taken up the trades quickly, and there are some benefits to having a mentor like Tim, who is the, the best inspector in the state, in my opinion. Want to congratulate her. Mr. McReany, in addition to having a new family member, has also received a, his certification as a North Carolina Government Finance Officer, and that's a course of study, over two years, education background, and time in grades. So congratulations on that, on both accounts, Daniel. And Ms. Ferguson wanted to announce her appointment to the American Shore and Beach Preservation Association Governmental Affairs Committee. That's a national beach preservation organization, and hopefully her participation in that organization will pay, have benefits for the town in the long run. So thank you very much. To some, to some business items, and again, apologies if I'm replowing ground that we've already announced, but for the sewer system lift station improvements, previously reported, I believe it was last month, that the North Carolina General Assembly had made an award of two million dollars in the budget appropriation. That money will come through DWQ, the Division of Water Quality. We have made application for that, even though the appropriation has been made, we still have to have our project approved. We have made the application for that two-million-dollar appropriation, with the intent being to combine the two-million-dollar Division of Water Quality money with the funding from the STAG grant, which is the state tribal and local government EPA money, to offend, outfit the Greensboro Lift Station, who we have also received word from EPA that our grant application has been approved there. So we're attempting to dovetail those grant, um, those grant awards with the project and the, the bidding that will have to take place in order to ascertain any pay-go contributions on the town's behalf.
David, can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
So are we waiting for the grants before we can, the, the second grant? We got the first one, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Or are we waiting for the second one before we can start?
Do anything.
Do anything?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. The coastal storm risk management study, there was also an appropriation through the state budget for seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to Holden Beach to cover a portion of the town's CSRM study contribution match. We have made the application for those funds. Don't know what the turn time on that's going to be, but it's anticipated that that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar appropriation and the pending Federal Disaster Relief Act funding will negate the need for any further town contributions on that study. Canal dredge. Canal dredging, the $343,800 Division of Water Resources grant has been awarded. It's the one that we did a quick turn this past month. It has been awarded for the Harbor Acres dredging project. That 75-25 split is $257,000 is state funds, and the other $85,000, $86,000 is town local match funds. And that local match funds are specifically detailed or sourced from the Harbor Acres Canal Special Revenue Fund because the dredging is only going to be a spot dredge in Harbor Acres. We're presently awaiting the Division of Water Quality certification before the Corps can issue their federal permit simultaneously with that permitting wrap-up effort. We've got a current request proposals out, request proposal out for a 2,700 cubic yard bucket-to-barge project in Harbor Acres with the bids being due on the 6th of February. Assuming a responsive bid climate and timely permit issuance, the staff is attempting to pull these things together for the board's consideration of accepting the grant and the dredge contract award at meetings on either the 7th or the 14th that y'all approved today. So we're not dialed in on those dates yet. We'll just have to see how it plays out, but that's what we're trying to pull off. The other piece of federal money, which is the Stormwater Project Partnership Agreement with the Corps. The Corps rescheduled the meeting that we had scheduled today until the 13th of February. But suffice it to say that our approach and intent is to use the elements from the Stormwater Master Plan that's currently being developed to identify projects and cost scoping in order to obtain federal funds. We think that what we're talking about is half a dozen projects that are on the order of about $2 million. That's what we're thinking of there. Status of the Ocean Boulevard resurfacing and bike lanes. The contractor continues wrapping up some stormwater improvements, refinements, and mailbox relocations issues this week. You might have seen some driveway cuts that have been made where they're getting ready to bring the heavy equipment in sometime this week with a promise of the work to start soon. That means that we've still got a Memorial Day finish promise. So it's getting closer exactly when they kick off. I don't know if that's closehold information or not, but we're expecting the heavy equipment to start showing up the end of this week. Normally, when you start rolling big pieces of the equipment in, they don't let them sit too long. But anyway, it's a work in progress. To the wildlife boat ramp. We staff, Kristy and I, met with the North Carolina Wildlife Resources reps last week. What we gather is that renovation is being initiated. Just exactly what renovation means, I couldn't tell you. I don't think that they know exactly what that means. The napkin sketch of what was installed up there in the '80s and '19 and further crayoned in 1999 has been located, and it pretty much depicts what's up there now. The exact design, it's probably going to take, other than, it's probably going to take about two years to do exactly what it is. I do not know. The design and the configuration is unknown at this time. We used it as an opportunity to communicate our concerns about the user volumes, the accessibility issues that are up there, its current configuration and uses, to include, also to include the practice of backing traders up the embankment and the possible impact on the pavilion, in addition to sharing with them what the town's plans for Block Q are. Whatever that may be, we're going to share the designs and the outcome of this meeting with them. And likewise, they're going to share, when they get to the point, what that final configuration for the boat landing area will be. With the county's commissioner, in addition, with the county manager's permission, I did conduct a site visit with those two reps from the Division of Wildlife Resources over to the county's property across the river, across the waterway there. And so they have seen it, they were aware of it, they've had conversations with the recreation director, the county recreation director. I don't know if I stepped on anybody's toes and have apologized in advance for playing in somebody else's sandbox to the county manager, but I thought that these issues are important to Holden Beach. They needed to be communicated, and they needed to be, have an audience with the folks that are doing the work. Now, was I hard-selling the wrong people? Probably. Any issues on the development or the reconfiguration of that property, the county's property, is going to have to take place in an arena that's probably not the Wildlife Resources Commission and the town manager at Holden Beach trying to put a boat ramp on the other side over there. So the county manager is aware of it, of that, and there may be an opportunity to do something toward those lines, much more than just repaving the boat ramp and fixing a storm drain and a bulkhead at the current boat landing up there. Retreaded, we had another storm and another thousand tires deposited on the beach. Thanks again to the Division of Marine Fisheries. They have a tire fetching machine and organization, and they have responded well to our ask for assistance on that. And not only that, we had a third occasion where we had a few more tires put out there, and our parts and rec technician was able to handle those with just a few of them that came in. I bring this issue up because in discussions with the town's coastal consultant engineer, the question has come up. Since there were 2 million tires put out there in an experimental reef in the '70s, I'd guesstimated that if we've just picked up 5,000 of them, that means there's a whole lot more out there. And just the ones that wash up on the shore are evidence, but we don't know how many other ones have been strung out offshore. And remember, Long Bay and Holden Beach in particular is sand-starved. And, you know, the litmus test heretofore on, were those tires compromising anything, is if the shrimpers started dragging them up, or, you know, they washed up here on the beach and we had to tend to them. I don't know that if there's, if we're not going to have to do a bit more to evaluate that artificial reef's dispersion over time as to what it's doing to the potential sand sources. I'm not crying the sky's falling, but if Fran Way, who's our coastal consultant engineer, if it piqued his interest enough, it's enough for me to become interested in it, and we're going to see what we can do to find out. That's all I have for the night, y'all.
Anybody have any questions of the town manager?
Thanks, David.
Okay. Mayor's comments. I'd like permission from the board to send a letter of appreciation to Mr. Green for his services. Anybody have any objections to that? Secondly, the Holden Beach causeway has been under study for years. There is a plan that has been made available for the public to come and view and discuss with NCDOT representatives. Just wanted to bring everybody's attention and update to the status of what's going on over there, to the best of my knowledge. And that is that the plan that has had the most acceptance is still available for review for the commissioners. If you're not familiar with what's going on on the causeway, even though that is in Brunswick County and has nothing to do with the governorship of the town of Holden Beach, the county commissioners have asked if the town of Holden Beach wants to make any comments on that. So it's possible that we may be asked formally for a report of our position on that. We are not bound and obligated to do that, but I would ask my fellow elected officials to be familiar with it in case we get caught in a situation that we have to talk about it or respond to their request formally. So it's a call for you guys, may or may not know what I'm talking about, to become familiar with it. It is an issue out there, and we do have the ugliest causeway in any island in Brunswick County, in my opinion. You go to Sunset Beach, Ocean Isle Beach, and Oak Island, I think that we have a long ways to go to get caught up. So with that, without rambling on on other things I'd like to talk about, I'm just going to pass it to the mayor pro temp.
Thank you, Alan. I guess the only thing I want to note is, if you're not aware, there are plans for a major insurance hike, and now is your time to express your opinion. So please, if you need information, I don't know if the town's got something posted, but they're talking about extremely, Brunswick County probably the highest, almost doubling our insurance rate. So now's the time to express your opinion about that hike and have your input behold, be heard. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
There was an email blast sent out. In regards to that, if you want to see it, it's on the town email blast and all that information.
Yeah, actually, I wanted to just build on that. Is there, is that something that the town should send a letter to the organization protesting?
That's been done.
Okay, good. I just had a question, too, about like the process for getting an interim lawyer. I know we just were at our training last week in the, I think it was the North Carolina League of Government?
Municipalities.
Municipalities. There were a lot of lawyers there. And they kept saying, "If you need any help, give us a call, give us a call." So that might be an opportunity for us to connect with, for at least an interim lawyer, and then we can move forward on the process of interviewing some lawyers. And I don't know who does that or what the process is, but someone can help. I just also wanted to thank everyone that volunteered for the audit committee. There were a lot of great candidates, as you could tell when they interviewed, and it was a tough choice, and it's a good problem to have, and I really appreciate everyone stepping up and volunteering for that position. It's not something I would want to do.
I should have said that, too. No, I appreciate it, too. It was amazing the caliber of people we've got that are applying for this.
Okay. Mr. Smith, the way it works is right, left, right, left, right. That's the proper procedure. Sorry, Mr. Smith, I let that slip by.
Excuse me, Rick.
It's okay. It's a common place. I just wanted to go on record again, for the ones that ask all the time, which I've heard several times tonight, when we're going to get the pier open? Well, we were going to have it open by this summer, but that's not going to happen now. Also Block Q, we had that ready to go. Boat parking, by the time the next flounder tournament, uh, flounder season comes around, we'd have adequate parking. That's not going to happen now. But on a positive note, it is really nice to see a room full of people. Evidently, whatever's going on here isn't to your liking or something that you want to voice your opinion about. And that's, that helps us be better commissioners. Again, the people that spoke tonight, the people that are online, their input is important to us, and it's much appreciated. Our town staff, guys, y'all do a great job. Police Department, Finance Department, Parks and Rec, team with inspections, David and Kristy. Everybody here works hard to get what it would take most places, more people to do. So we've got an excellent town staff, and the work they do, the maintenance department and stuff, is absolutely phenomenal. I wish everybody a good rest of the month, a good peaceful rest of the evening. It has been a little contentious this evening, but we live in a beautiful place here, and this place needs to be a place where we can all live and be happy. The folks that came in, wanted to volunteer, be part of this community, we couldn't do it without the volunteers, and it's really very much appreciated. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Mayor Holden.
Mr. Parfus.
I want to reiterate what Commissioner Smith said. I was really happy to see a room full of people. We do need to hear from you. Governing is a messy situation. We need to hear from everybody. Again, congratulations to the award recipients. I'm really thrilled about that. As I mentioned before, if we do have a pier committee, it's going to be an intense thing. So if we get to that point and you think you're going to sign up, number one, consider what your talents are you bring to the table, and number two, be willing to put that time in. That's all I've got.
Dr. Dyer?
I want to also thank everyone for coming out, everyone that's listening online. Your input is very important to us. Appreciate you taking the time. It's been a long evening, but we do listen to you, and I appreciate it. I want to congratulate Carrie, Kristy, and Daniel on their awards. Well deserved. We have an excellent staff. They work hard. We get a lot done. Congratulations, Daniel, on your little other project. Enjoy it. It goes fast. And I just wanted, here, Kristy, there was an excellent bake-off. Everybody had fun. I hate I missed all the chocolate and the caramel and the pastries. I hope we have another one soon. I heard it was a very big success. A lot of people got involved. Thank you for what you do to get the town involved and do these projects. It's very enjoyable. I appreciate it. And thank you for the people that put the time in to come in and interview for the audit committee. We appreciate your wanting to contribute. If you didn't get on, you can participate. You can participate in other aspects, so just keep working, and y'all have a lovely evening.
All right. Madam Clerk, have we fulfilled the requirements outlined in our agenda?
Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion here and now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for being here. We're adjourned.